Tonight I come to challenge the board to take charge of the decisions being made for Boone County schools. Rather to me, it appears the administration makes all the decisions and asks the board to authorize them almost after the fact. It always strikes me that you are at least one meeting behind the administration. The RFID tagging of students is an example of this. Since the PO, missing any statement of work, does not include one contactless reader, card reader, you must have outfitted the 100 or 200 buses you have with readers with the purchase of the Zonar system. And you did, because transportation personnel tag on and off now. It's obvious that students and staff tracking will be ubiquitous throughout the district's properties. Have you asked what data will be collected, how it will be used, where it will be correlated to other data, and how it will be secured? And then after answering those, have you talked to parents? You might want to answer these questions before Challen 19 runs another piece on student tracking. The discussion during the strategic plan review in May was full of examples. You all knew you were being fed a really sophisticated word salad, given the questions you asked that were averted. Mrs. Byrd asked what the schedule was and was told it was a living, breathing document. Perhaps you should have demanded a schedule for the 34 measures that were listed in a three-year plan that's barely one per month. Mr. Parks asked about cost savings. I bet at Mr. Parks' own business, he creates the expectation of results and would have no problem expecting two cost savings projects to be presented by this meeting. For me, I was amazed that most of the goals, descriptions, and examples of the strategic plan were presented by PhDs. In my world, PhDs deliver patents or peer-reviewed research advancing the art. I don't think either of those are occurring in Boone County schools. If so, you'd be reporting new learning models regularly, not administrating their purchase. You spent personnel money that could have been done by a couple of BS engineers and accountants. Net, don't be pushed around by this administration. Take charge. Don't authorize spending already done without your complete understanding. Set the schedule for results. And at least be voted out for what you initiated, not what you were manipulated to do. Thank you.
I just want to point out that Randy is an actual expert on RFID. He's an engineer who worked on those for his career. He points out there was no statement of work, pointing out that the purchase has already been made for the card readers without the school board's approval and without parents' knowledge. He also points out in the strategic plan that it's nothing but word salad and that there's a schedule for 34 measures for three years and there is no follow-up. There has not been any follow-up. And again, with the PhDs that we are paying for, that we have in our district, they are not creating new learning models and patenting anything or copyrighting anything. They're not creating anything. They are purchasing every year, basically renting curriculum every year, and the price goes up every year.
And we're paying for these quote-unquote "doctors" to manage borrowed curriculum?
Yes. That is leased to us every year.
And it goes up every year.
It went from $6,000 a year for one school to $26,000 just this year. And it's going to keep doing that because we're not utilizing our staff to create the curriculum and streamline it through the district.
So RFID, wow, you guys really dove into the deep end of the pool on this one. Radio frequency identification detection, okay? These can be read from satellites. These can be read from drones. They can be read from Wi-Fi. They can be read from everywhere. What transmission, what are we transmitting over the top of that? Well, I had 14 years inside of that. I could read everything that a person did. It's hooked into facial recognition. I can turn around and find out if you put that bag in that system at the airport, I can tell you every step where that thing went. Okay? You want to chip these kids? Okay? Why do you want to know what these kids are doing after school? Because these chips are detectable. Scanner points can be read at any point of these things. Law enforcement, everybody tell you, oh, how nice these things are and how easy your job. Sure was. Made our job really easy out there. Depends on what level you are. They could be weaponized. They could be weaponized against our kids. And the military uses it to neutralize people. What are we putting in this stuff? You guys can't keep track of our kids here? I'm confused. This kind of technology does not belong on a high school person. It was made by Homeland Security to track terrorists, not high school kids. We don't need to know how many times little Johnny or Suzie go to the bathroom, okay? If you're going to entertain that, I suggest you all get yourself chipped. Go one week and then find out what data you have just now transmitted, okay? Invasion of privacy. Our children do not need RFID chips on there. Wrong move. Dive into it. You'll find out exactly what can be done with those, at what level, and who's they are, okay? You don't need to know any of that information. You can tie in all my child's medical, anything. Every time they go by that point, that bag went by that point in there, it transmitted your credit card number, your facial, your ID, your card. Everything comes across that RFID chip. And if you don't think it does, chip yourself and then go back a week later and find out what's on it. Thank you.
Chuck refers to how these can be used. So how it can be used is in the future, how it can be used by other entities versus how they are telling us they'll be used. And I love that he points out, why don't you chip yourselves and then see what information you transmitted before you start putting this on kids? I think that was a genius thing to say to them.
I would just like to go on record to state that I'm against RFID tracking of the individual children. It does bring up so many questions, concerns about privacy, data security, information storage, and encryption. I think there's a lot of questions that we don't have the answers to. I'm also concerned about the mandatory nature of this with no opt-out. As I said, I'm very, very opposed to this. That's it. I just wanted to go on record to say I'm against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to preface this with, I remember last June when we decided to put this on the buses and the pass, and parents could look at the app and find this. I didn't know about this face. So I'm just going to let you know that since Friday, I've received a lot of messages. Over the past few years, we as citizens of Boone County have watched you as a board approve things that we don't understand. Tonight, you're supposed to approve a contract with CI Solutions for the second phase of Zonar. I'm asking you to put this vote on pause and give parents more answers to questions they have. I consolidated them for you, and I'll give you a copy. How will the spending of this money take away from the education of the students in Boone County? Will the schools have to use any of their money in the future to pay for this service? Can parents opt out of this service if they do not see it necessary for their child? What information is on the actual ID card? If information is not housed on the card, where is the information integrated to? What happens if they forget their card? Are they allowed on the bus? Who pays for the card if the student loses the card? Can our district sustain paying for this service if we continue to lose students? Sorry, that one's for me. If the schools are going to pay for this service, you realize it's taking away resources from our teachers. If this is really to help with students getting left on buses or lost, what are those statistics? How many kids got left on a bus last year? How many students got on the wrong bus? How many students got off on the wrong stop? If we don't have those specific answers, then once again, we are spending money on something we say will help with a problem, but not even really sure it's a problem. I am asking you as a board tonight to either vote no or vote to put this on hold till these questions are answered and we really understand if this is a true need for our school district.
They sent out surveys, and none of these questions were answered. None of these questions have been answered to date, and they've already set the special meeting for Tuesday, not even a full week, to give parent, from the time they sent out these surveys, for parents to respond. And for these, these questions are still not answered.
Right.
So they're not telling the public any of this information.
Because they've already purchased the program, Stacy. They've already purchased it. They're already going forward with it.
It's a special meeting just for this. It is an open meeting to the public. I ask that you all attend, that you email the school board members, even if you filled out the survey, because there's been questions as to if the surveys will be filtered and if that'll be true. But they can't deny if you send them all an email, address the one email to all the school board members, so none of them can deny that you have requested information or that you're against this being implemented, or whatever you have to say. They can't deny receiving that if they're all copied into the same email.
Everyone. So up on the screen, you'll see some safety considerations that were actually presented during the board workshop. I'm not going to go through all those bullet points since we've already discussed those through the board workshop. But I do want to bring up a couple of things and then obviously open it up if you had any further questions for me. The first thing I did want to do is offer a clarification on some things, so we have that out in the public. There has been some conversation going around about the support for this with law enforcement and specific departments. One of the things I do want to clarify that was discussed is the support we're getting from the members of our safety working group are the support for the need to know which students are on the bus and the need to know which students are present in an accident. It was not specific to saying we want to support getting this product. Their support with that safety working group was about the need to know those things and how it would be helpful and beneficial. So I just wanted to clarify that. We did not want to put anybody into an awkward position to say that they had recommended formally something that they had not. So I just wanted to clarify that. The other second piece that I did really want to...
Do you want to stop it there for a second?
There's a little bit of...
I want to explain why she's saying that.
Well, is it that who was in the group? I want to know who was part of the group.
So it was the Florence Fire Department and Emergency Services. They named Hebron. They named the Sheriff's Department. They had a list of all these people who were participating in the Safety Committee, saying that they were on board for this. And that's what they presented to the school board. They lied to the school board. So what did we do as citizens? We contacted all these people and said, did you endorse this product? So that's why she's having to clarify, because they were gaslighting our school board, saying that these people were on board for the Z-Pass. They put that in their documents
Wow.
to tell the school board that these people were in support of the Z-Pass. So now they're backpedaling because they lied and got caught.
Information as well in regards to how this would be used outside of the bus. So as we've shared, obviously, the student ID card is used to scan on and off the bus. But we could have the opportunity to use that physical card for some other areas in the building. But that's not with the chip. So we do have students in all of our buildings, actually, who use barcodes on library sticks, library cards. We would be able to add that barcode. So what we were referring to in saying we could also use the card for other things, the chip would only be used for the bus. The other barcode was what we could add to that card in order to facilitate using it in the library, going through the cafeteria line, just to make that card, what we could say, more valuable, so that it does serve more than just the purpose to go on and off the bus. So those were the two main things that I really wanted to clarify, to make sure that we had full understanding. Then really getting to the purpose of Zonar, it really is just about student safety. So, you know, in our district currently, we know that our Transportation Department has been understaffed for two years. Despite lots of different mechanisms to hire additional staff, we've not been successful, like everyone else in the area and lots of other districts across the state and across the nation. So what that does is that really forces us to work with what we have, with what staff that we have. And one of the challenges in that is that we are forced to have double runs, to have split runs, to have sub-drivers, and to be using all of our office staff in order to fill those vacant routes. So, you know, previously, back in the day, you could have had a bus driver that knew every student by first name, knew their parents, knew where they lived. You know, as a former elementary principal, they would point out, be like, that one's mine. He's walking past my bus. Bring me that kid. We often don't have that luxury right now. So in order to get students to school on time, which is the goal, because they can't learn if they're not there, you know, we do have to have those double runs. We do have to do split runs sometimes. And we have lots of people driving buses who are not familiar with those students. So our main purpose is to control the safety component of that, to make sure that we do know where students are and that especially if something were to happen. You know, in that safety working group that we participate with, with lots of first responders, that's one of the big conversations that we had about how difficult it is when there is a bus accident. And you are trying to account for students on the bus. You know, I'm afforded having, I have a bus radio in my office as well as in my car, and you oftentimes hear that. You know, we've had a minor accident. The first question that is asked from that dispatcher to that driver is, do you have students on the bus?
She's saying that with a Zonar GPS tracking on the bus and with cameras that also have live feeds, that they still don't know who's on the bus. She uses an example of ELA students, which are students who don't speak English. Apparently, they can't even tell the bus driver their name. They don't even know their name in English. Because she's saying, she's saying, she'll go into it. But she says, you know, the bus driver then has to ask students who they are, their names, to let them know who was on the bus during an accident. Again, there's Zonar already on it. There's cameras already on it, and they still don't know who's on their bus.
Oftentimes happens is the bus driver is going to the students and saying, what's your name? What's your name? What's your name? Oftentimes, we'll have students who, because they don't know this driver, won't answer or are not able to answer. You just finished up talking about the number of EL students we have, you know, in the district with needing to have things translated. So we oftentimes will still have a student on a bus that we're really not sure who that student is. So one of the things in looking at that safety piece is being able to say for sure, yes, we know where our students are. You know, the bus is an extension of the school building, and making sure that we do know where students are at all times is very important, just for that safety reason. You know, it was mentioned several times about, you know, about a student being left on the bus. We have had students that were left on the bus. This would assist us in that situation, even though we do have fail safes in place that can assist with that as well. But it's also a lot of times about that student that doesn't show up at the end of the day. And I know I said this in several of our committee meetings that we've discussed this. As a former elementary principal, the worst phone call you can ever get is from that kindergarten parent that says, my child didn't get off the bus. And, you know, my transportation staff that's sitting back in here can also attest to what that feels like for them. So we're really relying on hope in those situations. You know, we hope that there are enough people who are left in the office at Transportation who aren't driving a bus right now, you know, that someone's going to answer that phone quickly. Then we're hoping that child was on his regular route. Then we're hoping he has his regular bus driver. A lot of hope is going into that. And, you know, so going back to, you know, the safety piece, which is key. Safety is a priority in our district. I'm very passionate about making sure all students are safe at all times.
If your child is put on the wrong bus, okay, so we're probably talking about under third grade, kindergarten for a second. I don't think a third grader is going to get on the wrong bus. They're going to explain at a later point in this meeting that we did not purchase the system that tells the kid when they scan their card that they're on the wrong bus or when they scan their card when they're getting off, that they're off the wrong stop. We did not purchase this program to actually fix these problems. And again, there's cameras. And let me just say to parents, if your child is one of those kids who's going to purposely get on the wrong bus or isn't paying attention, accidentally gets on the wrong bus or gets off the bus at the wrong stop to go home to a friend's house or not tell you they're home, whatever, might I suggest you do one of those air, what are those things called, Jill?
Air tags.
Do an air tag on your child's backpack and track your own child. There's no reason to spend this kind of money when those circumstances do not often occur outside the first two weeks of school. And the responsibility of getting the kid on the correct bus is actually the teachers. The teachers are walking these kids out, putting them on the correct buses. And then if your child doesn't know where they live, I mean, the first thing in kindergarten you're told you have to know is your name, your parent's phone number, and your address. We're not doing this anymore? I mean, I understand if you just moved, but you're still supposed to teach your child the address that they live at. And then the teachers put them on the bus. Again, we have a GPS tracker on the buses and we have live camera feeds. So I don't know how scanning a card is going to tell you that a child fell asleep on your bus. Again, all these problems that they're talking about are not addressed by the system that they want to purchase or have already purchased. It solves none of these problems.
Right. And some of these kids have cell phones, so parents pretty much know where they are at all times.
If they don't have a cellphone, you can air tag your child's bag
Right.
and you can track them as their parent. And you can make the decision if that's what you want to do. It's not the government doing it.
Right. Because you know that these schools are ran by the government, not by any private entity. It is a government-public school, and they are tracking your children, whether you like it or not. It's already happening on the Chromebook.
Well, and it's interesting because later Jesse Parks actually mentions all the stuff he knows the school is currently tracking on the kids, including what they eat at lunch, their library books. Like, he goes through a list of, we're already tracking them this way, which was interesting because I don't think most parents know that that's occurring already.
There has been a lot of miscommunication out there about what the microchip is used for and what information that could be obtained for that. And, you know, we have offered a lot of clarification in the last couple of days with that. So we actually have Alex here from Zonar, and he can answer some technical questions for you as well.
He's from Zonar. He's not from CI Solutions. He's from Zonar.
Clearly, to make sure that we have...
And he's the salesman from Zonar. Let's ask him our question.
Yeah. And well, CI Solutions, they're just the company that's selling the cards, correct?
Yes, they're the ones who are actually selling the card printers, the cards themselves, to go with the Zonar machines and their computer systems, yes. But they did not bring in CI Solutions for this, to answer questions about RFID. And this guy is not really able to answer many other questions. They refer to a large school district in San Antonio, Texas. He claims there's 80,000 students that utilize this program. When I went and looked up the school district, there's actually 125,000 students in that school district. And a large portion of that school district does not speak English. So, and I'm talking about bus drivers as well, as well as students. So we have 19,000 students. That's all we have in Boone County.
So we do know that there's a cost associated with this. In terms of, we know obviously what the cost is right now based off of this invoice. And we do know that we will need to have buses replaced. We just actually bought eight. We do know that down the road, we're going to have to have buses replaced. I believe we're going to need more buses next year and possibly the year after that, which means we're going to need even more equipment to put on these buses to outfit them for this. That means more cost with this. Where is this money going to come from?
So with the, sorry about that. With the equipment that's already on buses, it is interchangeable. So the buses that we're ordering now are not to increase the fleet. They're to replace the ones that we have currently. So any buses that we decommission, so I'll use the eight that we just ordered as an example. So whenever we decommission eight other buses, we'll remove the equipment that's already installed on that and reinstall it on those other buses. So until we got to the point that we were adding to our fleet, because all of our buses are covered currently with this, we wouldn't have to purchase additional equipment. One thing, going to the eight buses that we currently have on order or will be ordering, as well as the last ones that we ordered, we've actually worked with the manufacturer, and those are being pre-wired, which will save us some. And at this point, they're doing that at no cost. So it will come to us pre-wired, and then at that point, our mechanics who are working or have been working with the Zonar installers who did the previous install and are capable to do that as well.
So basically, they're telling us they've already purchased the program.
Not only is she saying that, but two, she does not answer Carolyn's question. Where is the money coming from, Ms. Best? She never answers the question. Three, you have her saying that they come pre-wired now and that's at no additional cost. Okay? She's not talking about your pre-wiring. She's talking about the actual system itself.
Right. That's over a million dollars.
She does not answer her question. And of course, Carolyn doesn't ask it again. I'm going to ask you again, Ms. Best, where is this money coming from to purchase these items?
Do we know where it's coming from? Should we answer that for them? Is it SIR funds?
Well, right now, it's SIR funds. But those funds in the future are not going to be available.
Right.
And I think that's really what Carolyn was getting at, is where in the future is this money coming from? And again, she doesn't get an answer.
They're just going to jack up our taxes again, another four or five percent, like they did this last year, so they can pay for all this.
Be looking for that meeting to happen this summer. They like to do it in the summer when people are out of town on vacation and not paying attention. They like to raise our taxes then.
We also see that there's going to be a cost to the schools every year after this. How is that money going to come to the schools? How is the school going to come up with that money to pay this cost every year? Because we've got schools right now that are having issues with their SBDM budgets, just getting paper for the end of the school year. So how are we going to make sure that these schools are going to have this extra, what is it, $1,200 or more just for the printer and camera and the annual software lease, not counting the cards that they have to get replaced and the lanyards that they have to get replaced, because they are going to have to get replaced every year, which that's not factored into the cost on here, I don't think. Well, yeah, it is. Okay, I apologize. But how are they going to come up with that? Because that budget's not increasing. We're not getting any more money.
Right, absolutely. So in all the schools that I've spoken with, you know, when you look at that number, it is based on enrollment of incoming. So our initial purchase does actually cover court cards for every student in the district, plus an additional about 25% we added into there for new enrollments replacements. So after that, they would only be replacing cards for those incoming grade levels. So kindergarten, preschool, whichever one you enter. We decided again to replace it at third grade because keeping the same card all the way through elementary school could be a challenge. And you're going to look way different as a fifth grader than you did as a preschooler.
She does expect you to keep the same card from kindergarten to third grade. You are being expected to do that. And from third grade to sixth grade, and from sixth grade to ninth grade. So multiple years. And if you listen to how she factors in the cost, only 25%. So the additional cost for replacement cards, they do plan on charging parents for those.
Ninth grade. So that's what the numbers on the spreadsheet that you have, that's where those estimates come from. So looking at that cost, in talking with the schools, yes, it would be a cost to the district or to the schools, but they're already paying for some of that with supplies that this could replace as well. So they're already making name tags. They're already making bus tags to make sure kids get on the correct bus. They're already using expenses to make library sticks, bus lunch tags, a lot of those. So it could...
So they're not going to make those? They're not going to make those if they have these cards?
I am so passionate about this and as well...
They're not going to make bus tags for the kids? They're not going to tell them what bus they go on? They're going to be like, you have a card? Scan it.
So say if they do get cards every year, just say that happens. What are, what happens behind the scenes? There's contracts being signed. What are, what happens behind the scenes? There's contracts being signed behind the scenes where it's your RFID card is no longer low frequency, it's high frequency. And that's where all the notorious actions happen.
The Zonar guy will explain that they do on their website. So if they wanted to track a student, that the schools even have to log into Zonar's website. This is even housed at the school's level. It's housed on Zonar's website. You go into the website and you can find the number and it just has the student's name. Again, personal identifiable information that federal law refers to, nothing available online should have any child's personal information. So they're violating that law. And, you know, I've said it before, if they did things in-house, if we used our PhDs and master's degrees to do things where we have everything running in-house and not available online, one, our kids' information would be secure and two, they wouldn't be violating any of these federal laws that they're violating currently.
Well, because we could use it to go through the food service line. Ms. Caldwell and I have both worked together with SM of our budgets, aren't able to assist with that as well, because we didn't want to put the entire burden on, back on to the schools. And even in talking with the schools, when they talked about, well, let's break this down and what it looks like per student, it is a minimal amount. And if a school were to come to us and say, you know what, I really just don't have that in my site-based budget, I feel confident that we could absolutely figure out how to make that happen.
Have parents been in part of this discussion at all in any of the committee meetings that you all have held on this at all?
There has not been. So we have, we do not have a parent that sits on transportation. And in the other committees, I'm not sure if there are parents. We've talked in budget and we do not have parents who sit on safety as well. So one of the things that we have talked about, you know, is getting a little bit more input from parents.
And when we talk about replacements, going back to that again, what is your expected percentage of replacements every year for lost cards? Cause I understand that these cards are not going to have any identifiable information on it. So there's going to be no name, no picture, nothing on these cards.
A picture on it, yes.
There is identifiable information on these cards.
Right. There will have student picture on it, yes.
But wait, there's more. And the identifiable information's online, Carolyn.
It's a minimal cost for the cards. They're $1.85. If a parent wouldn't, weren't, you know, needed support in order to replace that, I think we could absolutely cover that. Just like we do with other things that we ask parents to, to replace if they're lost that do belong to the school.
And what happens in the morning when the mom who drops her kid off at the YMCA to get ready to go to the bus, they forget their card? How does that, what happened to that kid?
So obviously we're never going to not let somebody on the bus. So we would obviously still put them on the bus and we've talked about some different processes for that. You know, that could range from having a student sit in a seat specific on the bus that we knew, well, this student is in the seat with and has not scanned in, so is not going to be enlisted on that roster. If we're able to, to get the name from the student, which in your example, if they're from the Y, I would assume we would be able to ask someone what this student name is. One of the options we talked about would be to radio back to transportation.
No, they can't ask the student for the name, remember? That was part of the problem why they need the card.
Scanned in on bus 27. Can you add him to that roster?
Along that same line, I'll just piggyback off of what Mrs. Wolf was saying. Do we have data from any districts that have implemented this that look at the actual replacement? And I'm just thinking about this in terms of my kiddos went to Long Branch and one of the leader in me things that occurs is every child.
She answers the same question because Kim never answered it to begin with.
On lost, I'm thinking about my own child who shall remain nameless that has lost their green light card so many times. We make her pay for it every time she loses it and that's her money. So what does that look like?
I don't have any specific data, but I am going to ask you, Alex, if you have any data for that.
No, he doesn't. Listen to this.
Okay. So that would be something we could definitely add to our we'd like to know list.
On the same token, are there any Kentucky districts that are currently utilizing this system?
There were some. There are two that have it on their buses but have not implemented yet. Is that Harlan and Laurel?
Imagine that. They have it already on their buses, but it's not implemented.
Well, on the same card, we have, we transport a lot of private students, right? So what do we have with regards to requiring them to carry them or pay for them or maintain replacement costs for this?
I'm going to turn this over to Nick. He works with some of our private schools.
They haven't talked to them.
Director of Transportation.
They, they stopped going to the mic at this point, Jill, so that you can't hear what they're saying. But I will tell you what he says is we haven't spoken to the private schools or the, the private school bus riders or their parents. They've spoken to no one about this, is what he says. But you can't hear it because they stopped going to the microphone at this point.
Concerns with the chip and everything, they don't have the option to opt out.
So, you know, we've gone back and forth with that. If we don't make it mandatory, then we would have to work through how we would handle that. Because from a safety component, it does defeat the purpose. If I only know half the kids on the bus, what about the other half of the students on the bus? So as we've talked more and more about that in the last few days, we, we have looked at what are some different options for that and what would that look like? Obviously to have the highest level of, of security of knowing where kids are, we would want everyone to use that. But again, that's still up for discussion and tried to figure out an alternative.
It seems that we've got a lot of things that we still need to figure out with this.
That was my question too. Have we thought about like doing like a parent survey to see how they feel about it? I mean, it's the safety of their kids. And I mean, I know just middle school and high school, we're just, I mean, there's just not that much of a concern about them getting off at the wrong stop for middle.
You would be surprised. We've had several students that we've had to spend multiple hours.
Be a good reason to do the parent survey to see if the, if the parents are concerned about the middle schoolers and high schoolers getting off at the wrong bus stop.
The middle schoolers are getting off at the wrong stop. They're doing that on purpose and the system they purchased doesn't prevent that. So it's, it's not solving any of the problems that they even speak to. And then she also was saying that it would be, they'd have to make it mandatory because they would need it for any time we utilize our buses. So like if you go on a field trip, they need to know who's on the bus. And I'm thinking, well, we have teachers who have their students on our bus with permission slips in hand. Do they not know who's on the bus with permission slips in hand with the teacher and cameras and a GPS tracker? Do we still not know who's on that bus?
Would be good to know. Or would you be willing to play, to pay replacement cost if your child loses it 17 times in the first three weeks of school?
Absolutely. We, I, we are not opposed to that.
So she said it's $1.85 for replacement. Keep that in mind if they implement this, when they charge you more than $1.85 to actually replace that card. Cause I guarantee they're going to do that. But just keep in mind at the school board meeting, she said it was $1.85 to replace the card.
With regards to student data, and I keep hearing that there's, so from what I understand, there's a card that has a randomly generated ID. And then that is linked back to our Infinite Campus data that holds address, name, things like that. And then I guess I'm trying to understand as a non-IT person, and my husband would laugh at me because he is an IT person. How, what are the security mechanisms and are those part of the contract? Because I didn't see any of that language in the contract.
So the, the cards.
Cause it wasn't in the contract, just so you know. There was nothing about security, privacy, any of that stuff in this contract, by the way.
Well, has anybody seen the Zonar contract? Because the CI Solutions contract was linked on the actual agenda, but I haven't seen a Zonar contract. I guess we'd have to.
So that, when they passed that, it was just the purchase order. It was not, again, Randy brings that up about the statement of work. It was not on there. So no Zonar. If they have the contract, it just didn't go through the school board because we were not able to find it through the meeting minutes.
Z pass card has that encrypted number in it. It actually, once the student scans on there, and Alex, you can jump in if I say this incorrectly. Once the student scans onto the bus, that encrypted number is transmitted over their private VPN to the, the Zonar software. We upload only student name and student number to that, no other identifying demographics. So basically what happens is that student scans on, it sends that over, it matches that information up and creates that, that student roster. If I needed to know any other identifying information, I would have to then log into Infinite Campus on my own. So if I needed to know what are the parents of the students on this roster, I would have to go out to Infinite Campus to get that information. So it is not linked to, to Infinite Campus directly at all.
So let me ask you this. Hold on. So it's not, it's not faster for a bus driver in an emergency to have, also they have the radio. They have live camera feeds. They have radio and they have the GPS tracker. And there's an emergency on the bus. It's not faster for them to tell them over the radio who's on the bus. What they have to do is they have to log into Zonar's website, find the student with the IDs that are on the roster for the bus. And then they have to go into Infinite Campus and match those students with their information and find the parents. But it seems like a bunch of added steps in there. And so just bus driver can't just say, what's your name? And I'm sorry, but if our English or non-English speaking students can't do what's your name, then I think our schools are failing them fiercely.
It's a really good point. Before we know it, we're going, they're going to have drones following our kids around. I think that's maybe like Zonar stage five, maybe.
Like you bring up, it's a slippery slope. And at what point is some contract going to be hidden? Because it's not like our schools are transparent and have spent the last three years earning the trust of the public. They have not done that. If they had done that piece of it, there would be different conversations happening, but they have not done that. They have not earned our trust. So we have to go through these meeting agendas and meeting minutes, having no clue what they're trying to implement. And apparently we had a bus driver tell us that this was already supposed to be implemented last year.
Right.
And machines?
Sure they do. I'm sure they do. Hundred percent. And the problem with our district is you give them an inch, they'll take a mile. And that they're showing their true colors to this particular night because she just spilled the beans that they've already implemented. It's already on all of the buses that they've ordered. It's already been rolled out. It's been.
They're being pre-wired now.
Yeah. Tuesday is going to be pointless unless we have school board members that will actually step up, listen to their constituents and say, we're not doing this. The public does not want us to do this.
And you know what will happen? You know what will happen if they do that, Jill? The schools will be caught with their pants down. They'll have to send back stuff and get our money back. And then you know what? And going forward in the future, they probably won't preemptively do any ordering before asking the school board.
It's disrespectful to the board members. It, it shows the lack of leadership. And I'll go back to what Jacob always says. It's the lack of leadership of Turner. Cause he's rolling out whatever he wants to roll out. He's got his agenda and his talking points. And it's totally disrespectful to the school board members and it makes them look stupid and incompetent because that he didn't, if he did roll it out with them, then shame on them.
Well, and why is it on the agenda and they're voting on something that they clearly don't have answers? And you know what? We still don't have those answers and they're going into the meeting on Tuesday without having these answers. That's what's even more funny. They didn't even give the parents a week to respond on the surveys. And I'm wondering if there's a filtration process on those surveys, if they'll actually get the real results, which is why we're telling you to email, email all of them in one email. So they can't deny they received it.
Right.
Sorry, we don't trust you Boone County schools because you haven't earned that trust.
Exactly. And you can't really, yeah. And you can't really put that on Cindy or Carolyn yet because they, they've walked into this hot mess of an administration. So hopefully they step up on Tuesday. We'll see.
But you, later on in this video, you will find out that Karen Byrd is behind this whole program. She's on the transportation committee and that she really likes this program.
Perfect world. And we get our bus driver roster back up and we get back on, you know, no more double runs and our bus drivers know our kids and everything. Does this system just go by the wayside and it was a waste of money?
Um, I would love, I'd love to have that perfect world. I really would.
It'd be a good problem to have.
Absolutely, absolutely. But in that perfect world, you know, we could, there's still definitely good use for this. I wouldn't say it's something I would immediately set aside. Because again, it does go back to that, having lots of safety features, you know, of having that immediate roster in a bus accident, especially if you're in a bus accident and in a worst case scenario, the driver's not able to, to identify students. You would still have that immediate roster. So even, you know, in that perfect world, when you can identify all of your students and, and know them by name, which is the best case scenario. It does have a lot of operational components as well that are kind of some, some extra benefit to it. You know, we have lots of buses that have heavy ridership in the morning and in the afternoon, they may not. So, you know, as we're dealing with double runs, being able to make some changes based on real numbers could definitely help us kind of streamline and eliminate some of those extra routes. So it does offer us some other benefits as well. You know, obviously the safety piece is key for me. But we would also get some additional benefits as well. I think always knowing which kids are on which bus, just for that fact, if, if we're trying to find a student and they do get on the wrong bus, it happens. Even with drivers who, who know kids really well, we've had that happen. They get on the wrong bus or get off at the right, or off at the wrong stop. And quite frequently, you know, the other component to this is because we could utilize this data along with our GPS, it does allow us to identify where a student got off the bus. And this is sometimes where some of our older kids come into play. You know, they'll get off the bus and go to their friend's house and don't bother to go home and tell mom and dad where they are. I think anybody in here in the, who's worked in the building has had to help with those phone calls. And luckily they've all ended up with a kiddo at somebody's house, the friend's house, and didn't tell mom. But worst case scenario, if you were to have a student go missing, and these are some conversations we did have in our safety working group. You know, the part of that that's key to finding students is knowing where they were last, being able to, we could say with a hundred percent certainty, that's where they were. It narrows down that search circle. So it awfully, absolutely.
Again, the cameras don't tell you exactly.
By face.
So technology lifecycle, these readers, how long do we anticipate it will be before we have to replace them? I mean, technology changes quickly. What does that look like?
That question I can't answer. They are warranted for three years. They do have a three-year warranty life. Alex, would you know the answer to that question?
So at some point, if we have to replace these, there is no more S R money. So what does that look like?
So they're relatively inexpensive. $212 is the kit that it takes to replace those, which if you put that into perspective, I did learn something today when you're talking about cost. We pay $70 for a trash can for a bus. So $212 is.
Why do we do that? Why do we do that? $70 for a trash can on a bus?
Are you kidding me? And I'm sorry, she said it was $200 for this reader?
$212 per reader. So if we have to replace all of them, how many buses do we have?
Well, nobody's brought up, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself here, nobody's brought up the fact, is there like a service fee? So each month we use this service, how much is it going to cost us for them to maintain the software or hardware?
That's Zonar. That would be their contract with Zonar. Right. And I have a feeling that the service contract with Zonar is more expensive with this capability added to it. But like Maria said, technology is constantly advancing, right? So when are they going to, I don't know, up the frequency and track the cards differently? Or change what they're doing without notifying the public again? They did not speak to one parent. Nor did they talk to the, the private schools about doing this either.
Well, do they ever? No.
No.
And as we talked about, you know, we would be building that into being able to move that equipment from one bus to the other. But it would be something that we would just have to look at, making sure we're building that into the transportation budget.
Just a statistical question. How many kids do we lose track of every week? I don't know that someone keeps track of that, but my transportation people might be able to tell you that.
We don't even know if this is a real problem. He, again, they don't go to the microphone. We don't even know if this is a real problem. He, again, they don't go to the microphone. But basically they don't have the data. They don't have the data that this has ever really been an issue outside of the first two weeks of school.
Okay, so either it's not an issue or they just aren't just not prepared.
Did all of our principals to see how many would support this and/or want to spend their money on this?
Yes, I have. And actually, you know, we've talked about this multiple times in lots of different administrative meetings directly with principals. So just as that assurance that no one had changed their mind, I re-asked them today and said, you know, based on, you know, any recent conversations, any other questions that you have, let me know immediately if you have any, you know, any change of heart, anything that you're concerned about. I've not had anyone reply and say, I don't want to do this. We have had questions, you know, the one thing I'm concerned about is what do we do when they lose them? A valid question, absolutely. You know, as we do with anything that we give, but I.
And they did not talk to all the principals, by the way. They're going to make you think that they talked to all the principals. They did not. I spoke to a principal myself who had no idea. And it was an elementary school principal. I had no idea anything about this. So when they, when she says that all the principals we talked to, I don't know how many that is. Yes. And Karen Byrd does read a letter from an unnamed principal who says that he likes this and that he likes the ability to be able to take attendance through this mechanism as well. So when they say it's not going to be used for anything else, that apparently is not true either.
Um, are the cards linked to the GPS?
Are the cards directly linked to the GPS? No.
Okay.
So, but you, we, you can almost use the card, pair it up with the time on the GPS and then determine the timestamp. So it's not linked directly to the GPS.
Okay. How, how many students are riding Cincinnati? I think you said Cincinnati Public Schools.
Cincinnati Public Schools, they're not using it district-wide. They have this equipment on their buses, but they're not using it on every single school. Right now, the largest school district we have is a prominent school district in Texas. They transport about eighty thousand students a day using this.
Right.
That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand students.
I don't know the technical term for it. Creepo hacker people have broken into your system and stolen the kids' names.
Ah, zero. It's not happened before.
Okay. But it, but it could happen, I guess.
I'm definitely not an IT person to tell you that something's possible or not possible. But so far to date, we've never had anything like that happen.
Okay.
Well, and you know what? He's not the IT person who would deal with that either. So he can't tell them whether or not that's happened or not either.
And, and an administrator, someone with a login, they would know exactly the latitude and longitude of that bus rider when they scan it.
Of the swipe. They would know the latitude, longitude, date, time and bus number of that swipe occurring.
All right. What, you said that the Cincinnati Public Schools had the readers on the bus for about nine years?
They, yeah, they still have them. They still order buses with those. But they were looking at specific schools doing it. They also wanted it primarily for Medicaid reimbursement for their special needs population because it automates the process of tallying Medicaid ridership.
Oh, I thought it didn't do anything else.
That's actually what about fifty percent of my customers' districts that use Z Pass, they use it exclusively for their special needs student database as well.
The district in Cincinnati that's using it is using it for Medicaid attendance reporting. Again, it can be used for other things and parents are, if you're okay with this piece of it, are you okay with them implementing other things on top of it without you going through every, every school board meeting agenda, which comes out on a Friday and the meetings are on a Thursday, and you have to go through the agenda and you have to figure out if any of these contracts have anything to do with building onto the system. Because it's not like the schools are going to tell you or ask you, it's only because we freaked out, called the news and got this massive response from parents who are mad about it, that they're even having this line of questioning. From what I understand, they had all planned on voting yes on this without talking to a single parent. Except for one school board member.
Because I believe we talked about that if they potentially are scanned on the wrong bus, the driver will know and can send them. That, that doesn't work that way. Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's another level of this that you could have it do that. We, we did not purchase that level.
Okay.
So there is another possibility.
Yes, there's a possibility. Stop at that expense. And so I, I guess.
So it doesn't solve our problems, right? However, something else that came up in this meeting is the behavior issues. They said there are worse behaviors they've never even seen before. Something about four hundred and fifty disciplinary hearings. That it's substantially larger. I'm paraphrasing. So we're going to put lanyards around every kid's neck with cards that they now have to remember. And Maria even stated that she punishes her child by making her child pay for it. Pay for the card. So we're going to be adding disciplinary problems if we're adding a lanyard and a card, a responsibility to the little ones.
Agreed.
This is more behavior issues, more discipline problems. And then if there is an emergency and the teachers had the kids take the lanyards off, then they're not being utilized for the purposes you're telling us about. Because they, in an emergency, no one's going to be like, stop, get your lanyards. We can scan you.
And, and just think it would be a distraction too in class.